Our February sixth meeting. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a friend here, Jan LaPorte-Jennison, you want to come up? Jan's going to give us an update on East End. We're excited.
Good afternoon, everybody. Commissioners, Mr. Colbert, it's so nice to be here. I wanted to come and just thank you. I know that the award, the ARPA award, is on your agenda for later. And I just wanted to say how grateful we are, our board, the staff certainly, and the 5,000 folks that we serve every year. So I'm excited to tell you what we're talking about here is the renovation of East End Community Services Building at 624 Xenia. Those of you who have been out to our building, you know it's pretty raggedy. And we've been waiting a long time for the opportunity to do this and the time finally came. So we are embarking on a $6 million project. We have raised $5 million and we are very optimistic about the last million coming in. We are in the process of hiring a contractor and it looks like work will begin in early March. So we're all getting ready for this big development project. I think when you see the building, you will realize that it's going to kickstart development in inner East Dayton, particularly on Xenia Avenue. It's a beautiful design. And what we're expanding, we're adding 7,000 square feet of new space. We're going up and then we're building out on our facility. We are establishing a new computer lab and an employment training center as well. We expect to be partnering with Sinclair and do an employment center, training center, much like we have in other parts of town. So we're finally bringing those services to East Dayton. The other big exciting development is that we have started a whole family coaching effort so that now we can work with whole families as they, and we facilitate them setting their own goals and in the process becoming empowered to become agents in their own lives. Our goal is to work with those folks who are outside employment, who don't have, for whatever reason, the confidence or the skills that they need to enter some of these wonderful employment opportunities that the county has been developing for all these years. We want to get East Dayton folks up to speed and realizing a whole new sense of well-being. So while we do all the other work that we do in education and recovery support and kind of everything in between. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you so much and I promise we will make you proud.
And we know you will.
Thank you.
We know you will.
We do.
No question about it. Bless your heart. You've been doing this for so long and you are the heart and soul of that neighborhood. I mean, thank you, thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's very kind. It's been a privilege, I have to say. It's an absolute privilege.
You're certainly a beacon over there. And, you know, over the years when we've talked about two generational approach, now full family. You guys have always really been the leader on that and we appreciate it so much. Looking forward to a new place for you. A refreshed place for you.
Refresh.
Refresh.
Yes, right.
So we're happy we can be a part of it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Good to see you.
Yes, always. And we'll come out and visit.
Oh, you'll be at the ribbon cutting. We're going to ask it around the stages. Actually, it's going to be a wall breaking.
A wall? Oh, yeah, okay. Let's break that wall. She loves that. Where did we do a wall breaking?
At the dry cleaners in West Carrollton.
But there was another one too.
And a paper mill.
Okay, in downtown when we...
Yeah, I like the machinery.
She loves to pick those hammers and move. Oh, that, yes. Now that's with the claw. All right, thank you.
It's fun.
All right, County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We just have one resolution on the agenda today, Resolution 24-249, and we need to pull it from the agenda to appear on a future agenda.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's fine. Do you have anything else to say?
That's it, unless you want something you want to hear about it.
I wanted to share something, I don't know. You got up easy so... I better knock on some wood. So far with snow.
We have, we've been fortunate so far.
I just said that's why I...
Salt never time and now you've jinxed us. But the guys will appreciate it if we have more.
Thank you. Board, we're going to move to Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have three late agenda items. On behalf of the County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have Resolution 287. This is to amend the inter-agency agreement between Children's Services Division, CSD, and the Prosecutor's Office for Legal Services provided by the Prosecutor's Child Protection Unit. Resolution 288, which is to authorize the purchase of one 2023 Dodge Durango from Martin Motors of Dayton, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $51,693. And Resolution 289 to authorize the purchase of one 2023 Dodge Durango from Dave Dennis Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in amount not to exceed $51,693.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Michael, Common Police.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 250. Submit a grant application to the Ohio Supreme Court for a 2024 technology grant to purchase iPads in an amount not to exceed $12,559.68 through May 31, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Domestic Relations Court.
Under Domestic Relations Court, we have Resolution 251. Authorize a facility rental agreement with Sinclair Community College in an amount not to exceed $20,736.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court, hello.
Hello. On behalf of Juvenile Court, Resolution 252. To authorize an agreement with the Montgomery County Educational Services Center, MCESC, to provide educational services and assessments for juveniles involved with the juvenile court schools in an amount not to exceed $33,000 through December 31, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have Resolution 253. Accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for funds available under the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program in the amount of $255,889.59.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, it's always nice to get those grants, isn't it, Michael?
It is, it is. And it makes a real difference in the different programs that they can serve at Monday.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Law Library.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Law Library, we have Resolution 254. Authorize a renewal of the Westlaw subscription with Thompson and Rogers in an amount not to exceed $79,380.84 for a two-year term.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator, Michael.
Thank you. Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk of the Commission, approve the minutes of the meeting on January 30, 2024. Resolution 255, approval of bills. Resolution 256, approval of travel and expenses. And Resolution 257, approval of personnel action. All three lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, thank you. We have several for your consideration. Resolution 258, select a bid and authorize an agreement with Triton Services Incorporated for the administration building 10th floor office renovation project at their lowest and best bid of $1,223,000 through December 31, 2024. 259, authorize an agreement with Gray Matter Systems LLC for professional services for network, cyber, and SCADA support for Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $74,970 through December 31, 2024. Resolution 260, authorize a purchase agreement with Friends Office Products for the rival 4th floor public defender renovation project furnishings for the facilities management department in an amount not to exceed $438,842.01 through August 30, 2024. 261, amend the agreement with the Standard Insurance Company for group life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, supplemental life insurance, and short-term disability insurance to add family status change language effective March 1, 2024. 262, extend the price agreement with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for detention food service for the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Court by extending the term through February 29, 2024. 263, authorize a lease option renewal with Randolph Investments LLC on behalf of the Clerk of Court's Auto Title Division for the leasing of 1,000 square feet of office space located in the Randolph Plaza Shopping Center at an annual rate of $9,500 through December 31, 2024. 264, adopt revisions to the purchasing policy and procedures by establishing an inclusion policy. 265, solicit requests for proposals for a five-year education and marketing plan for the Environmental Services Department. And the next two resolutions are to approve intra-county justice web service agreements. 266 is Common Police Court General Division and 267 is other various county departments.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Got four resolutions today. First is Resolution 268, authorize an agreement with American Suncraft Corporation, Inc. for construction of the South Metro Tank Rehabilitation Project at their lowest and best bid of $1,786,250 through December 31, 2025. Resolution 269, accept an easement deed for sanitary sewer and water lines through property belonging to Oasis Tree and Turf Entry, Inc. in connection with the development of Oasis Turf Entry and record the same. Resolution 270, declare an emergency and authorize the repair of the 42-inch Miami Shores Well Field Pipe at an estimated cost of $85,000. And Resolution 271, release 100% of the cash surety and subdividers contract with Grand Tradition Homes for the Grand Villas of Clayton.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John Parks, OMB.
Thank you. We have Resolution 272 to authorize the execution and delivery of one or more consents and waivers in connection with the redemption of certain series of revenue bonds Ohio's Hospice, Inc. obligated group.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry.
Thank you. We have several resolutions today. Under Human Services Plan Development, we have authorized agreements through March 31 of 2025. Resolution 273 to Homeful for Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, coordinated entry project in an amount not to exceed $329,146. Resolution 274, also with Homeful for the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program Diversion and Rapid Resolution Project in an amount not to exceed $405,785. Both of those support our youth ages 18 to 24 navigating the system and also rental assistance and supportive services. Under the Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution 275. Authorize an affiliation agreement with the University of Dayton to provide educational field experiences for undergraduate and graduate candidates pursuing a degree in the Social Work Program through December 31 of 2026. And then finally, Resolution 276. Authorize in a memorandum of understanding with the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board for data sharing and collection on a black youth mental health grant with revenue not to exceed $70,000 through September 29 of 2024.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. I know you only had a few, but you had a couple really, really good ones. I really like the Social Work Program with UD. We know that social workers, we're not getting enough that we need and so I think this will be a great partnership. And then the homeless youth... Is Homeful have places for them to go or that's what part of this they're working on?
They work with landlords in our community to help place and house youth that need a housing.
Okay.
So they provide those supportive case management services, help them find housing and then other supports that they're needed. They'll make the referrals.
Okay, great. I know you remember Doris and all the work that she did with our youth. And I went and visited her last week at a location that she is going to have her dream. We've all heard her dream of having a place for our emancipated youth. And so she's finally going to get that. And be able to have about 12 residents there, so.
We'll have to hook them up.
I know. That's what she asked me to do. Actually, she asked me if I could get Director Colbert to come see her. And I said, "You're still calling him director when he was the ODJFS director?" And she goes, "Yeah, I can't help it." You have an invitation to go visit Doris.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Chris Williams, Business Services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Business Services, I have several resolutions and one late item. First is 0277, authorize an agreement with Economic Modeling LLC for subscription services, user training, and technical support for developer software in amount not to exceed $30,300 through March 31, 2025. Information Technology, 0278, authorize a purchase from Cronos, Inc. for the Omni Partners Cooperative Contract for equipment and support services for the Cronos Clock Systems in amount not to exceed $15,663.82 through February 28, 2025. Under Community and Economic Development, 0279, rescind Resolution Number 230198 dated February 7, 2023, which approved an economic development government equity edge agreement with City of Vandelia for Trust Core MSW Project. 0280, approve a qualified energy project application submitted by Gem City PV1 LLC and supporting exempting such property from taxation, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes and specifying the time and manner of such payments. The next three, authorize delegation activities agreement through February 28, 2025. Utilizing CDBG funds versus 0281, City of Myndesburg for the owner occupied home rehabilitation phase six project in amount not to exceed $50,000. 0282, City of Englewood for the spot black removal project in amount not to exceed $50,000. 0283, Village of Verona for the Main Street Construction Phase Four project in amount not to exceed $70,000. And the late item, under Community and Economic Development, 0290. Authorize an agreement with West Care Ohio, Inc. for the East End Facility Expansion Project in amount not to exceed $750,000 through December 31, 2024.
Move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, I would just add, the work that Jan does with our workforce division is pretty fantastic too. The job training pieces, trying to get people ready for work, for that next step. So Jan, your entire team, thank you. We really appreciate you.
All right. Under Commissioners. 24-284 is to confirm the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce appointments of Stephanie Canet, Jason Prater to the Economic Development Government Equity or Edge Advisory Committee effective immediately through December 31, 2025. It's nice to see that Jason's going to join us.
It is.
24-285 is to confirm the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce reappointment of Mark Williams to the Economic Development Government Equity Edge Advisory Committee effective immediately through December 31, 2025. And 24-286 is to reappoint Diane Farrell to the Arts and Cultural District for a three-year term ending February 1, 2027.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have several citizens signed up to speak. Lynn Lamance, you want to come up?
Hello, just give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
My name is Lynn Lamance, 1061 Bertram Avenue, Dayton, Ohio. I go ahead, okay. My name is Lynn. I do live in Dayton, the Northwest Frog Priority Board of Dayton, Ohio. And for several years, I lived in the Five Oaks neighborhood. I now live in the Fairview neighborhood, near where Good Samaritan Hospital once stood. And I wanted to introduce myself and let you know I had lived next door to a vacant house for several years. I started looking into ownership of properties and interested in the vacancy, the mass vacancy around the North Main Street area that's taken place. And just been following up with ownership and coming across several issues that I'm hoping somebody from the county could actually work and look into. The Recorder's Office had a deed fraud article in December regarding frauded deeds in the area. And we're actually seeing signs in neighborhoods advertising possibly such issues as well as online and Facebook possibly selling properties. The people are not owners of properties and they're also not licensed real estate agents. I do want to thank the Treasurer for proposing legislation in regards to the quick claim deeds. There is an excess of quick claim deeds that I believe needs to be tracked as well as these possible frauded deeds. And any entities need to be looked into as well as attorneys or notaries that are also, I guess, associated with these properties. And that should also be public knowledge. In the city of Dayton, we used to have a Lot Links program which has been disbanded a few years back. I believe this is actually in response to the loss of the Lot Links program. I know there's demolition taking place, but there is still an excess amount of vacant properties in our area. The Land Bank on the Facebook page had actually stated there were six successful transactions in 2023. I'm hoping that that can be looked into to raise that and move properties back into productivity. I'm not certain what the REAP, the successes are with REAP. There is also a number of dead owners that own properties, not just in my area, but in other parts of Dayton and Montgomery County as well. These properties do not go through probate. I think there's maybe one I have looked into in my area that's gone through the probate. But with the number of baby boomers, that should also be looked into.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sarah Nichols, you want to come up? You have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Nichols. I live at 623 Delaware Avenue here in downtown Dayton. I moved here about a year and a half ago. Previously, I lived in different cities around Greater Dayton, or excuse me, Greater Cincinnati. Since moving here, it is impossible to notice the amount of neglected and abused dogs in the downtown Dayton area from here to like Trotwood, from East Dayton over to like northern west Dayton neighborhoods. It is rampant. There are so many stray and dumped dogs. I believe a lot of it comes from dog fighting, which is organized crime. When you have organized crime, it leads to more organized crime. That elementary school that's on Salem, I've seen dogs like chasing children down the road. Like I've had to stop before and intervene with these larger animals. And it's not their fault, it's bad ownership. I read an article recently where a Dayton prosecutor said that charges have not been pressed for dog fighting in over a decade. Dayton is known for dog fighting. These dogs that I find are clearly bait dogs. They're scarred from their legs to their head. Their neck is totally fine. That's an obvious sign of bait dogs. These dogs get used until they're half-dead, beaten, and they get dumped. In the last year and a half, I have pictures, I've found at least six dogs that I've taken from neighborhoods. And it's dangerous. People don't want to move here if they can't walk their dogs in their own neighborhood. People don't want their kids to go to school here if they have to fight off crazy animals while they're walking home. And I've noticed that Dayton has put a lot of money and resources into reviving this area. There's lots of really cool small businesses. Lots of roads have gotten redone. Five Rivers has awesome metro parks. But there's these small things within the community that are scaring people away and preventing people from having a good quality of life here. I think the Animal Resource Officers that we have through ARC do care. Their hearts are in it, but a lack of empathy due to just experiencing too much is a real thing. I don't think we have enough Animal Resource Officers to respond to cases. More often than not, when I call and report a stray dog, they will not come unless the dog is vicious or clearly neglected. So you know, I'll find these big dogs and I call and ask for help, but they don't come because they don't have enough officers. If they are able to catch the dog, there's not kennel space. So I'm proposing maybe we come up with some plans for additional funding or some kind of resources for ARC so they have the ability to get into the communities and make them safer for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I want to add to these comments. Number one, on the dog fighting, I need you to take that up with the City of Dayton law enforcement. That's directly within the city's jurisdiction and they have the code enforcement within their own jurisdiction to enforce dog fighting. On the strays, we pick up thousands of strays a year. And the vast majority, probably 60 to 65% of the strays that we pick up a year are in the city of Dayton. So I would ask you to go to the city of Dayton and ask them to tighten up their own ordinances around the amount of dogs per owner, around dog fighting, which would help us enforce state law around strays. We can't do this without partnership with the city.
Right, right. There's a lot of things in the works too to change local ordinances. Because like ARC can't respond to certain cruelty cases. Excuse me, if there's a cage, even though it's not providing proper windbreak, there's a cage in the yard or an empty bowl. A lot of times, law enforcement can't necessarily do anything because the ordinances aren't strict enough.
That's correct.
Who would I go to as far as like funding for ARC?
Well, ARC funding is on us. But again, we can't do this without a partnership in the local jurisdiction. So my recommendation to you is to go to the Dayton City Commission and ask the Dayton City Commission, address these problems with them so that they can help with their own code enforcement, which will allow us to then work with them on these issues.
Okay.
And I'm going to add, unless they know how... And I'm sure they do know that this is a huge problem. We certainly all know it's a huge problem. But I think Dayton has to hear, you know, we don't want them to say, "Well, nobody's ever complained to us."
Right.
Right? I mean, so, and you're right, our officers that go out do the best they can, but we're talking, and you know it, and thank you, by the way. Thank you for what you are doing. But we know that it's at a very, very big level of dogs that are just roaming in.
And so many.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's tragic, I think, I couldn't even get through the article, this story about the dog.
Oh, God, don't start that.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
But...
Yeah, and that animal actually led to a petition or a petition that has over 20,000 signatures that we do plan on taking to Columbus. Yeah, and it started with like 4,000 and over the last month or so. So we're just trying to gain traction and awareness.
Yeah, we're all dog lovers up here.
Trust me, you're talking to dog lovers here. We were all adopted from the Animal Resource Center, so we know how important. And thank you for coming and talking to us.
Absolutely, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Yeah, she put epidemic, and you're right.
Yeah.
It's becoming an epidemic with all the stray dogs. Sarah Moore, come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sarah Moore, and I live in Dayton. Need my address? Is that, is it like a city? Yeah, 5970 Erica Court in Dayton. And I'm with Code Pink Women for Peace. I'm here today to talk about the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance and concerns that we have about the recent ICJ ruling where there's a pending case against Israel for genocide and the implications of that case for Montgomery County as a business partner with Israel, particularly if we're arranging contracts for the manufacture of weapons that would be used in an international crime and how Montgomery County might end up pulled in to these international proceedings for complicity to commit genocide because we are arranging these business deals that then give our business partner the tool to commit crimes. And it would open the county up to lawsuits or maybe even a county employee to getting an arrest warrant through the International Criminal Court. There's a lot of risks involved with the potential outcome of this ICJ case. They could go on for quite a long time before there's a final determination. But in that time, anybody whose signature is on any documents facilitating deals or allowing for there to be funding for these contracts could potentially be complicit in an international crime. And so, today I just want to serve the Commission with Freedom of Information Act request for some initial documentation. And our, looking into this will be ongoing. I'm sure we'll see a lot of each other. But I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we have very grave concerns about this issue, both morally, that we don't want Montgomery County participating in funding a foreign government's illegal military operation. And I'll leave my comments there, but we're definitely not done here. Thank you. Have a good day.
Are there any more of these related to this?
Montgomery County has blood on their hands.
Okay. I, I think before this spirals, we gotta stay factual, okay? The JREDA program is not a contractual conduit for the county. And I don't know how JREDA has now become this bad program. It's been going on for years. It is designed to place the appropriate business connections in the United States with the appropriate connections in the Israel or surrounding communities, okay? That's what it does. There are no contracts back and forths between the county and these businesses. The JREDA, the contract is with our consultant that acts as liaison for the JREDA program, which is involving the State of Ohio, the Dayton Development Coalition, the City of Dayton, and Montgomery County. The goal is to be bi-coastal, meaning jobs over there that businesses connect with in the states and jobs here that businesses could connect with there. The goal is not for us to have some contractual relationships with these businesses. It's to create partnerships. And it's been very successful in doing that, which has brought jobs to both Israel and the United States. That is it. So, I think somehow this has gotten cooked up as a bad thing. If there is something in an international law or somewhere that is problematic with this, then it will be between the businesses at hand, not between the county, who has only acted as a mediator to bring businesses and people together, okay? So, there's the fact pattern around this. And I think you'll see through your public records requests that that is all JREDA does. JREDA is a facilitator and a convener as a program. It is not a contractual conduit agency that has contracts directly linked through the county. That is what we do, okay? So, we look forward to filling your public records requests.
And I add also, Michael, thank you, that was a good explanation. There is no partnership with Israel on this, you know? So, I heard that said, and we don't have, with the Israeli government?
Yes.
We, we don't have any kind of, that's not what JREDA is about. It's about, you know, businesses to business and people to people, not, yeah, so, thank you.
Absolutely right, Commissioner. It's about jobs. And it's about products, goods and services, moving between the mainland or the, somewhere in the United States, business here and business in Israel. It's not designed to be a conduit to county contracts.
And I think the public records request will show, and it could be wrong, but I don't know that we've ever had a business related to arms or weapons. No, never, never heard that, so, since JREDA started, so. But thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for voicing your concern. And we will get all the public records you need to use as soon as possible. Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Mr. Feaster, I saw you sneak back in. Come on up.
Willie Feaster. I'm just gonna talk briefly about, you know, blessings, blessings. You know, 20 years of my life, God let me stay in the struggle. You know, I have been in the struggle for 20 years of my life. I have been in a struggle. And God put me in that struggle for a reason, because I was disobedient to Him. Because at one time, man, I could've had a movie deal, could've went all over the country, got away in Columbus, you know, I had a book in the makings, but God, I was disobedient. So, I struggled for 20 years of my life. But I have never said, I felt 2024, God was gonna start to somewhat bless me. And He has. He has. I mean, I'm never gonna put the name out there because the person don't want accolade. They don't, they don't do it for the show. But I'm just saying, God has now started to lift me up. Because sometime, all we need is a boost. We need somebody to believe in us, man, you know? People say, ain't nobody cared, don't nobody care, people don't care. Yes, how you test a person's heart, how you get to that, I don't know. What do you say, act, do to reach somebody, to get them, want them to help you? I don't know. I don't know how you do that. But all I can say is, I'm starting to get there, man. Somebody is giving me a boost, and I really believe that with that boost, I can make it, you know? A lot of people, all they need is a boost, but how they get it, I don't know. It took me 20 years to get this boost. 20 years from when I was coming from Columbus to here, just to get a boost. Just like the people in the Bible did the wonder for 40 years before He delivered them. That's a long time. Could you imagine, we had to walk around this circle for 40 years before God took us out of that? Woo, we couldn't take that, but it took me 20. But God is starting to bless me, man. He slowly, he, oh, Willie, I ain't gonna throw it to you all at once, there's so much stuff I want to need. I'm gonna give it to you one step at a time, because you are still disobedient. And no, I'm not worthy, because I have imperfections. As a human being, I have, I struggle. God know I can't live up to His standards. It's impossible for anyone to live up to God's standards, because we are human. Only person can live up to God is Him. I sin every day, but God know we gonna sin. But He forgives us. Every day, He forgives us, because He know we are imperfect. Oh, we got so many imperfections in us, but He loves us still. So, I just had to say that, you know? It's my turn, man. God has started opening doors for me through people. And it took me 20 years of struggling to get somebody to believe in me and start helping me. And I give all the praise to God, because a citizen don't want the praise. They don't want that. God did this here.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
All right, County Administrator. Do you have anything you wanna talk about?
I do, Commissioners. I have a really good one coming around the corner. We have a Employment Construction Job Fair.
Yes.
That is just around the corner. We are excited about this. It is Thursday, February 15th at Caroline Historical Park from noon to 4:00 PM. We expect dozens of employers to be there. The goal is always to connect people with jobs and job employers with people. And many of them are going to be hiring right on the spot, Commissioners. So, this is the beauty in this. And if we need to do any prep, clothing, resume, we can do all that for you. So, you can find a registration link at thejobcenter.org, and they can help you forget, from there, I say that slowly, thejobcenterallinone.org. And, and we can help you prepare for this opportunity to find gainful employment. And Commissioners, I thank you for your support. These construction fairs, job fairs, hiring events that we put on throughout the year, they're not cheap and they're not free. And, and it takes a lot of staffing and resources. It takes contracts with close at work. It takes people to plan these events. And, and we've always had your support throughout the community to help families and help people get jobs. And so, I do appreciate all three of you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, and thank your team and, you know, our workforce development team. We, we saw them all in action last week. We went for a business roundtable. And each one of them talked about what every facet of workforce does. And we know they work hard, and they're excited to have this hiring event. It's the first time we've been at that venue, so that'll be interesting. But, and, and just a reminder that a lot of the employers also do second chance hiring. That is very important to us as we look at our community and the people that need the jobs. We wanna make sure that employers are looking at everyone.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, for young people that are interested in getting into construction, we have a program with our partners called the Building Futures Pre-Aprentice Program. And that, what that does is gives these young people who are interested orientation into the construction industry. And they are trained on the use of tools, different materials. They do basic blueprint reading and construction math. I don't think I could do construction math, all those corners and... So, our local unions are choosing graduates of this program then to go and become journeymen. So, they can quickly make a decent wage, a good wage, actually. So, details on our Building Futures program that we have can be found also at the same website, thejobcenter.org. Building Futures.
And, and that really is an amazing job. I went to the graduation. And one sibling, and they're kind of all ages. I mean, there were parents in there with high school kids, so it's, it's not just young people. But what was really amazing, they had one sibling go through and were so taken with the program that they got, they got two or three of their other siblings to join. And they all picked different industries, you know, like one was a plaster, one was... And it was just nice to see probably by word of mouth and testimonial of how you can begin to change your future. And you can, so it really is a wonderful program as it grows.
And, and, you know, that, that industry is...
They need people.
They need people, for sure, for sure. So, hopefully, we can direct more people, more, more young people into that, you know, that area.
Okay, on another topic, I wanna remind anyone who is on food assistance that Food and Nutrition Services Recertification Interview Waiver will end this month. If your recertification is due in March or after, you will soon be receiving an appointment letter from the State of Ohio. This also applies to cash assistance and public-funded childcare. Now, if your address is not up to date, please update it in the self-service portal today at benefits.ohio.gov. That's benefits.ohio.gov. Please go through the necessary steps and do not miss out on any, any of your benefits. Thank you. Very important.
I could wrap things up with talking about a favorite topic of mine, sustainability. And we are going to have our very first sustainability luncheon. We have them quarterly. This is the first one for 2024. It'll be Thursday, February 22nd, at the Sinclair Conference Center. And they're gonna be talking about sustainable development goals and energy access, equitable clean energy, and a whole lot more. And they use that whole PK form of presentations where you get 20 slides in five minutes or whatever. So, it really keeps it rolling along. Great, always have a great turnout, and you can connect with people from academia, from industry, from government, just people who are diehard energy enthusiasts. So, it's a great group to come. And they are gonna be talking about the Bring Your Green School Challenge for this year. So, I can't wait to hear about that. Early registration is $25, and it's available at bit.ly/bringyourgreen, BYG Luncheon. And I also, while I'm at it, speaking of environment, I took a tour of our newly transformed Environmental Services Lab. Oh, my gosh, facilities, if you're here, I see some facilities. Bravo. You guys did an amaze. That used to be the mini-university, and we watched it all. You guys are in our windows.
Treat, you are in for it.
It's absolutely beautiful, and they've set it up for safety and for bringing light in. It's a better working environment for, for our individuals in there. And, you know, just safer, more efficient, more effective, and prepared for the future. So, kudos, honestly, Matt, everybody involved. I was really impressed.
Team effort. Facilities team, you all wanna stand, please?
Yes, they're here.
Great job. Great job.
Good, all right, thank you.
It's a group effort.
It's great.
See, I remember when it was daycare down there.
Oh, yeah.
I had one of my sons went down there for a while.
So, I'm anxious to see how, how it's changed.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit, I'm sure.
All right, well, we do not have a commission meeting next Tuesday on the 13th. So, our next meeting will be right here at 1:30 on February 20th.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Have a great week.